Okay, welcome everyone. This is a work session of the Pecoson City Council and tonight, we're pleased, this is a joint work session with the school board as we get into the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. We know, let me just sort of lead in here and congratulate the school board. Y'all have done a tremendous job and, you know, council recognizes it. We talk about it, we talk about y'all when you're not around. But I will say that the school board and the school superintendent and the cohesiveness with the city and the way that we bring things together, we really appreciate the working atmosphere that we have. We understand your challenges. I think we've had several work sessions to fully understand your challenges. We get it. We also recognize what the school has done to maintain their standards through what I would call very challenging economic times since the recession of 2008. And we talk about the recession of 2008 and I, you know, my hat is off to Jennifer, Jennifer Parrish, Dr. Parrish, as everybody knows her as. You know, I've never seen anybody who came into a job with such ideals and then had to just bail water to keep the boat from sinking. And she's done a great job while maintaining those standards and we appreciate that and it makes all of us look like we know what we're doing when really it's only one or two of us at this table that do all the mean work. We appreciate that. I understand, Jennifer, you want to talk to council tonight and give us a short presentation and we look forward to that.
Great, thank you. I'm going to do an abbreviated version of my budget presentation, both for you all but also if we have any folks in the community watching who might not have seen the presentation that I did. So really, this is just a reminder, and here we go with a reminder of how we've bailed water since the great recession. We've made almost $5 million in budget cuts during the past five budget years, keeping in mind that our budget now is about $19.8 million. So when you talk about $5 million in cuts, it's very challenging. As part of those cuts, we've eliminated 50 and 1/2 positions, which represents 15% of our workforce. And of those cuts, we cut 10 and 1/2 teaching positions beyond enrollment. So in other words, we've had enrollment loss, but we've cut well beyond what we needed to cut for enrollment and that's really starting to impact us. Also during three of the last five budget cycles, we have had employees lose their jobs simply because of budget cuts. We've reduced our health insurance benefits greatly for our employees and in fiscal year 12 and fiscal year 13, we had to eliminate two instructional programs. So as Mayor Hunt, you discussed, you can see the challenges that we face as we've made those budget cuts. I talk about this entity quite often, so given the opportunity to talk again, I just cannot stress the damage that the state is doing to public education enough. In the last five years, Virginia's reduced its funding for K-12 public education by at least $1.2 billion. And some of this now in more recent years, while we've seen the economy start to upturn, they are not reinvesting in education, so we're not seeing any of that $1.2 billion put back in education. So as part of that reduction, they reduced their share of the standards of quality. Those are the standards that we're required as a school division to meet, as is every school division across the Commonwealth. So when they reduce the SOQ funding for us, that resulted in about a loss of $2.1 million. Remember, I said we've made $5 million in cuts, so there's $2.1 million just based on the standards of quality, which represent about 20% of our state funding. And again, this has nothing to do with enrollment loss, simply $2.1 million was cut because they failed to fully fund the SOQs. Over the course of the last five years, state funding for per pupil costs has dropped by as much as $760 a student. So you can imagine when you start to multiply that out, what that means for our division as well as divisions across the Commonwealth. And another example of their failure to fund our budgets, when we started with fiscal year 14, we knew that we had one-time funding in our budget. The state said, "We're giving this funding to you for a year, don't plan on having it next year for fiscal year 15." So for us, that is $75,000. So when I presented the budget last spring, I said, "Please know, we're already $75,000 in the hole as we move forward to fiscal year 15." So that is part of the challenge that we're facing this year. And again, they have not fully funded us again moving into next year. It's a whole different story when we talk about local funding and I know I cannot thank council members and city manager and city staff for the support you continue to provide for us. While you certainly cannot fill the gap that the state has left for us, you've done everything you can to try and help in the last five years. So from fiscal year 11 through 14, you have provided us with over $641,000. We've used that to save teaching positions. You were able to help us when we had to do the funding switch for the employee share VRS, which was required by the state. And we did that so that we could hold our employees harmless, as I know that you did as well when you made this, you did your switch. And also, at one point, you provided funding that was equal to the funding you all used for raises, so we could then provide a very small raise to our employees as well and they greatly appreciated that. So again, I can't thank you enough and I know the board feels the same. We feel fortunate to be in this locality. Very quickly, what we're looking at for our fiscal year 15 budget is we had total cost increases of $174,000. So this includes inflationary cost increases as well as some other areas that we saw. We had a very large VRS rate increase that we need to cover for fiscal year 15, which cost us $216,000. We have a total state revenue reduction of $278,000 moving into this year. Now, we did have re-benchmarking done. This is done at the start of every biennium budget, so the state did re-ben benchmark. As a result of that, we're getting $218,000, but there's an asterisk here because really of that $218,000, $177,000 of that is going to special ed services as well as funding some of our current staff. So it's not additional funding. This is not the state reinvesting in education. This is the state covering what minimally they've been covering in the past. What's also important here for the re-benchmarking is they did it based on the budget that they had last year. So they didn't take into consideration that they cut $1.2 billion out of education, so they've re-ben benchmark after making deep cuts themselves over the last four years. So really, what you see here is we have an increase of only $41,000 in funding. I say only, certainly, we're glad to have the $41,000, but when they've cut millions out of our budget, it's really a drop in the bucket. And you can see it nowhere covers our increased costs. So this means for us that we have a budget shortfall of $450,000. If we do not have additional funding, then we have to make categorical cuts of a little over 12,000. In past years, we've, you've seen that number be much larger. We simply have nowhere else to go in categorical cuts. We just can't do it. So the rest of it has to be in personnel cuts. So that 437,300 represents nine and 1/2 positions, with four and 1/2 of those positions being teaching positions that we will have to cut, which again, will impact the programs that we can offer.
Dr. Parrish, would you define what you mean there by categorical, please?
Yes, that, for example, we are cutting 5% of materials and supplies and professional development. That's exactly what that $12,000 represents. And every year, we've cut 5% there. We just don't have other areas to go to. We were able to find energy savings in the past. We've done that, we can't, we can't do that again, so that's where we are categorically. If we end up, as we move into the future, we know that we'll impact our instruction and support systems if we have continued reductions. I say to the community, "You cannot do what you were able to do in the past when you've made $5 million in cuts. You simply cannot continue to do everything that you did." So as we continue to make reductions, it becomes more challenging. We do know at this point that VRS rates will likely increase through fiscal year 20. So we know we're going to continue to see those rate increases and that will impact you all as well in terms of VRS rate costs for city employees. We anticipate another enrollment loss. We're tracking it carefully, but if we do get that, then we will see a reduction in funding. And we know that we'll have inflation and increased costs that will impact us in fiscal year 16. So I say that we know we've got issues that we'll face in fiscal year 16, but clearly, we've presented a budget focused on fiscal year 15 when we made the request to you for the $450,000. And again, I say, we know we're going to continue to face new unfunded mandates despite the fact that our state-elected officials continue to refuse to reinvest in education by restoring any of that $1.2 billion that they've cut in the last five years. They just, they haven't let up. They've continued to give us new mandates, yet they're not themselves reinvesting in education after what they did as a result of the recession. The next slide, I actually borrowed from Mr. Wheeler, our city manager, so I'll turn it over to him to let him talk to you a little bit about that slide.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. This slide is a real eye-opener and as you can see, for those at home, the red line is state funding for education here in the city. The blue line at the bottom is local support, excuse me, for school operations. And the green line is the combination of school operation funding locally and school debt funded locally. And what you'll see, if you go all the way to the left, was a pretty big gap. You can see who the primary funding partner was, get a sense of how much the combined funding at that time was. And as you look across to the right, you see that very steadily, the state has been decreasing its allocations to support our school system. And despite the fact that each of my five years here, the city council has increased local funding, at least some, to the extent that it could, each year. Despite that, the school divisions had to reduce over 50 positions during that period and that is a direct result of that red line. And one more thought with regard to the red line. It's difficult and not fully complete to just focus on revenue. To the extent there are unfunded mandates that are also included, they show up on the expenditure side, not the revenue side, to include the significant increases we've seen in both the city and in the school system for VRS. So long and short of that is, even within the current funding amounts, what we've been able to do with it has gone down even more than the revenue, on top of the revenue. But that is, that's really how we got to where we are today. You can see that unfortunately for us, the green line is approaching and if things don't change, we'll actually surpass the red line. And that's why each year, we've added money and the school system has still had to make very difficult reductions. It shouldn't be that way. When the local government is investing, as you have in education, you'd like to see that investment translate into more programs, more success for our students. And to borrow a term from you, Mr. Mayor, we have been investing and treading, treading water. And the budget presented this year and requested by the superintendent of the school board is simply to not go backwards for a year. The $450,000 in the recommended budget, which is a one-cent tax increase coupled with $300,000 from the general fund balance, if you approve that, will be the first time since the recession began that the school system won't be going backwards. It won't be cutting additional positions or making additional categorical cuts. You'd like to think for $450,000 investment, you could get more than that. And the reason you can't is indicated by that red line right there. And that's where we stand and that's what the recommended budget does. It's, for the first time since the recession began, stopgaps, though does not advance the, the school budget.
Anything else?
No, that really ends it. I do want to highlight one fact on the red line. The reason the federal and state funding line isn't going down more and is staying flat is really, the only reason they've done that is tied to the VRS rates as well, because they've had to provide some funding for the increased VRS rates, but none of that goes into the classroom. That comes right into our budget and goes right back out to VRS. So if you had that out of the mix, you'd actually see that red line continuing to go down while you see our green line, our local line, continuing to go up. So I don't even want to give credit for the flattening of the red line to the state right now, because again, it's, it's not helping us with our positions and in the classrooms.
Thank you. And I'll just say that, you know, this is not a, and your comments, both Randy and Jennifer, your comments are 100% dead-on. This is also not us bashing the state to say what they're not doing, but it is a wake-up call to them. Because I can tell you, you know, we have our local state representatives. We talk to them. You know, it's the difference between a council of seven who understand and can make decisions and a legislature of several hundred who don't seem to be able to assign the leadership that they can then all agree with. And it's really about the state. You know, I would tell you the same presentation is probably made to the state. Boy, look at the money that we're, we're just barely hanging on, but it's really about priorities. And the priorities of the city of Pecoson is education. That's one of the reasons that we are a city. And the priorities of the state seem to be multiplying, yet with the same funding streams. And sometimes, it's about hard choices. And those hard choices, we've had to make in the city of Pecoson. I think Randy has, and council has entertained ideas such as closing the public library. We've entertained ideas of diversifying and going with York County on certain things. There's really just no net benefit to some of those things. I would challenge the state to do very much the same exercise. What are your priorities? What are the core forms of government that you want to provide? And I would hope among those core things, the state thinks that they can do something about. It's education, transportation, and mental health. Those used to be the mantra of Virginia. They are not the mantra of Virginia anymore. It seems to be about every special interest group that comes to them and that they all need to supply money to each of those. I can tell you, it's, it's difficult to be a state representative. I understand that. It is also difficult to receive that red line from the state, who was your financial partner in education, and understand that they're not making the hard calls as a community that we are. So I just kind of want to give them some cover, but at the end of the day, the red line tells a story. And the green line and the blue line tell stories. The state used to be our 50, or really, our 60%, 40% partner in education. And I will tell you this until the day, but 20 years ago, when I came on council and I was young and dumb, and I'm not much brighter today, but it was 60% was supplied by the state, 40% by the locality, but hey, we bought the schools. So really, it came to about 50/50. They were truly financial partners. We bought the schools, 60% of operating costs were carried by the state, 40% by the locality, and I'm using rough numbers here. Today, it's really, they're on the minor side of the 50% number. And guess what? We're still paying for the schools. That is the other part of the budget discussion this evening is, when you look at the seven cent to make up the fiscal imbalance, hey, there's an elementary school in there. You know, the other city did buy, built a fire station after Isabel. We also built an elementary school. So, you know, right now, I would tell you that the locality is becoming the predominant carrier of education. And if so, then the taxpayers of Virginia need to be asking, "Well, where's my money back? Where is my money back? Because I'm having to put it out to a different fund." So that's all I've got to say. Council and school board. I'd like to go around the room and kind of get everybody's feeling and I'll give you first shot, you know, as chairman of the school board, Gary. I appreciate your, your information to council and then we'll tell you how we're feeling about this.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate that. You did allude to a point about maintaining the standards through those tough economic times and give a lot of that credit to Dr. Parrish and her staff, but also to the school board, because we did set some goals. We knew we were, had our back up against the wall and we were going to have to make those tough decisions that you were talking about. So we sat down several years ago and said, "What are our goals going to be?" And at the top of the list was maintaining the quality of instruction. We did not want to take anything away from our students and take anything away from their educational experience that they have by going through our schools. And fortunately, for the most part, we've been able to, to maintain that. We have, as Dr. Parrish said, had cut some programs over the years, but one of the top things we've tried to do is to maintain that educational excellence. The standards of quality, when they start talking about cutting from the standards of quality, the standards of quality, I don't know, based on the state's definition of standards of quality for every school, every certain number of pupils you have to have, this administrator, this teacher. I don't know how any school in the state, or in the nation for that matter, could function effectively by what the Virginia standards of quality are, because they're just miniscule. You would have significantly increased class sizes, one nurse running between schools and, and just minimal, not enough administrators to do the daily grind in the schools themselves. And so when they start talking about cuts there, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what they're thinking. I do believe you that they do need to set their priorities and they start, need to start making some tough decisions. But we are very appreciative of everything that council has done to support us over the years. Things could have been a whole lot worse had we not had your support and for that, we're very grateful and it has allowed us to keep some of those priorities in place that we have.
Mr. Hux.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff. To state the obvious, Pecoson City school system is the cornerstone of our community and the health and well-being of the school system is certainly vital to the sustainability of the community as a whole. And I very much support an increase in tax funding, with some of that, of course, being designated for the school system. I think that is a sound investment for the future of the community, not only the schools. I support this, not only as a school board member, but as a private citizen and taxpayer, as well as a parent of two daughters who are students at Pecoson High School. And they are fortunate enough to be the fourth generation of their family to attend Pecoson City Schools. I would love very much for that family tradition to continue and would certainly appreciate any and all support that y'all could provide. Thank you so much.
Well, I can't say it any better than Mr. Hux did. We appreciate all the help that you've given us and the schools. All I can say is, good schools make good citizens. Those good citizens come back and have generation after generation and the city just keeps getting better. So as far as any investment the city provides to schools, it's, just makes for a better community for everyone. You know, whether you have children or not, you're a part of this community. We're a close community and neighbors, you know, have children and you have grandchildren. It doesn't matter. There, it, schools, just, you have good schools, you have a good community. So I appreciate everything the council has done and I support anything you need to do to help us out.
I don't know that I have much that I can say to add to that. That was all wonderful. I want to say that y'all have a very tough job and we recognize that and we appreciate everything they all do. Not only are schools important, but we have public safety, we have other things in the city that are important. And everything needs to be balanced and everybody's needs need to be met and I think y'all do an amazing job doing that regardless of what the decision is tonight. I think y'all do an amazing job, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Coming around on the school board.
You're skipping over me.
Saving the best for last, buddy.
I can stay home and get this treatment.
Mayor Hunt and city councilman, I like, like everyone here, I want to thank you individually but as a group for your support. And I'm very appreciative that in Pecoson, we work hard as two boards, but we work together. And you know, I read a lot in the newspapers and see that's not always the case in other locality, so I'm very appreciative for that. Dr. Parrish described it very well, Mr. Wheeler as well. I can't believe that they're re-benchmarking after all the cuts. It's really hard to believe that now they'd like to come forth and take credit for all the money they're going to now fund us with, all this new funding. To me, that's just like, it's outrageous to consider it that way, but it tells you a lot about what they're thinking in Richmond. You know that we're working very hard, the school board office is working very hard, our teachers are working very hard, and we're doing as many improvements we can with the little bit that we have. And I'd like to also thank the Educational Foundation and, you know, the teachers come out of pocket for some of their own supplies and their things and I, we just can't thank our teachers and they're hard-working professionals, professionals. And I'd like to, once again, say thank you for all that they do and recognize what they do. And you know, Pecoson was a top choice for me to make my, our family's home and there was a reason, it was education. York County was close, Pecoson was right there. I'm telling you, Pecoson was the better and we really enjoy it here. But that's the way we want other families to decide where they live, is based upon the schools. So again, thank you for your fantastic support. Hope that it continues.
I totally agree with what everyone else has said. Being the newbie on the school board, I've heard and I've seen the collaboration between the school board and city council, but I've never felt it before until I became a member of the school board. Many of the people in this room and around this table are products of the school system in Pecoson and children are the future and it takes dedicated people to make the hard decisions that have to be made. And I trust that they'll be made. We have to do it.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all the school board, so Buddy can go now.
Gee, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I guess you can't go now.
I just kept thinking about this tough decisions thing that, that you challenged the state to do. To me, I think this group right here is exemplifying what it is that you're challenging the state to do. As elected officials, I know it's never easy to bring up a tax increase at all, so I would like to applaud your courage for doing so. I think you are living by example for what others should do and I just wanted to say that, so I appreciate y'all's courage.
Okay.
Now you can go, Buddy, I guess.
Thank you. Somebody else is going to cut me off. I, I just can't lay enough accolades on Jennifer and her staff and the school board for what y'all have done with such reduced financing and it's just phenomenal that our school system is still at the top and that's where we want to keep it. And I'd just like to make a plug for the extra two cents for the school system. I would hate to see us mimic the irresponsibility of our general assembly in not supporting our educational system, because if this educational system goes down, Pecoson's going to go down. That is what we're here for. And for us to make a one-time shot out of the unappropriated fund balance is doing just exactly what the state did. You got it one year and then the next year, you're right back in the same soup and it's, it's just irresponsible, I think, to do that to them. So I'd just like to make my plug for the extra two cents designated for the schools and leave the unappropriated fund balance for something other.
So to make it, to make it clear, I think, and Buddy, you and I have talked and I know other members of council will have varying opinions, but I want to make, make it clear to those that are listening from home and those that are joining us here. Basically, what you're equating, I think, in Randy's upcoming presentation, which we'll see in a little bit, it says one cents, one cent for schools and seven cents to close the fiscal gap. And what you're really saying, so that people in public understand, is that one cent really needs to be three.
Yeah, because we were going to take the other $300,000 out of the Yeah, because we were going to take the other $300,000 out of the unappropriated fund balance, which is just like what the state did. Usual $75,000, you got it for one year, and you're on your own next year, so.
Right.
I think the only way to look at it is to solve the problem, so that they don't fall back into the same situation.
I understand. I just want to make it clear. All right? Thanks. Bud?
Yeah, Bud, I appreciate your comments there. I've been walking the streets this past week. I come up for reelection this coming year, and in my conversations, there were two or three people that I talked with who asked me about tax increases. And I told them that that's a very real possibility, and that seeing what I've seen in the budget and seeing what I've seen presented to me from the school system, that I would very likely be voting for that extra two cent. And every one of them that I talked to, without exception, supported that. I had no one complain. I went down, I went down Smith Street, Alpha Street, now Forest Park, and I still have something to do in Forest Park, but I know I talked to at least 75 people, and I probably had that conversation a minimum of 30 times among the 75 people, and everyone supported it. I support your comments, Gene, and I hope that everyone listening tonight may contact their representatives or their senators and encourage them to reexamine their priorities. That when a state is ninth in funding prisons, and 38th in funding the school system, and although transportation is very important to the state and very important to the local area, when you spend $300 million on a highway project and don't pave one inch of highway, that $300 million would do world's good for the education system. You need to get the best bang for your buck. $300 million to do EPA estimates and look at grass and frogs, okay, does not get you much bang for your buck. It would in the education system. So I encourage everybody to encourage the state to reexamine their priorities.
Thanks. I think I've had my say. Henry?
Well, all City Council members, Dr. Parrish, I've been on the other, y'all's side as well, so y'all are doing a lot of juggling as well, and I understand that, appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I think you're being awfully kind to the state in your comments. Individually, I know it's probably tough.
It is tough to hold back, Henry, and it's tough to hold back.
I understand, and I'm not going to hold back. Individually, I know it's tough on those folks. Collectively, they should all be embarrassed and ashamed looking at that slide. As Bud mentioned, 460, I guess, they spent 300, $400 million on that, and that still might not happen. They got a tunnel to nowhere they're working on. The priorities are just way out of kilter, and here we are today faced with what we're facing. I'm one of those folks that doesn't like to tax anybody or anything at any time. I think we pay enough taxes, but we're at a juncture where it's a necessary, I think we all see that and know that. I have had countless emails in the last two weeks, contacts with folks. While people have concerns, they understand where we are. Unfortunately, I don't think with what we're going to do, we can go as far as I would like, or any of us would really like for that matter, for the viability of our city, schools, Public Works, public safety. But that's another bridge we're going to have to cross here pretty soon, very soon, to maintain the level of security and things we have in this city. The capital improvement projects need to be looked at. That's here. We have our work cut out for us, and every citizen listening, watching, that we come in contact with, I think they understand that. City manager, your staff, you've made it glaringly obvious of the things we need to do, and I think most folks in the city are paying attention to that. And so here we are at this crossroads, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions, and they have to be made, because we cannot continue to just kick this thing down the road. Kicking the can is over. And I appreciate, Dr. Parrish, I was on the committee when you were brought in, and sometimes I think you cursed me for that, but I'll kid aside, it's just what y'all have done. Like I said, being on y'all's side, and also being a husband of a former teacher until last year, and having to take money out of our own pocket to buy things, materials, it's absurd. But the state has put us in a position that we have, that there's no choice. So hopefully, we can help make it a little bit better by the choices we make next few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Vernal?
Well, first of all, I want to say that I certainly appreciate the difficulty in dealing with a budget of this condition. I dealt with a lot of budgets, but never any that had anything even close to this kind of difficulty to meet the very essential needs. Just a added comment about the state's situation. When the current state funding formula was developed in the 1970, it was in response to some lawsuits that went to the Supreme Court, saying that a state had the responsibility to be sure that everybody in the state had an equal education. So if you were very poor, you had to get more money from the state and so forth. And the formula worked pretty well when it was being funded properly, but they've come up with a unique way to make everybody equal. They just underfund the whole thing. So everybody is, I don't think there's a school system in the state. It isn't. Dealing with some issues because of the underfunding from the state, and it's just, I think, the state likes to tout itself as being a good, business-friendly state. Let the education system go down and find out how business-friendly it's going to be. That is one of the things that draws people to the state. People with businesses want their employees to come to a state where there's educational opportunities, and I think the state is throwing that away. When we ranked 38th in spending for education and public education, as wealthy a state as Virginia is, it's just inexcusable, in my opinion. But I will say one thing about our pending tax increase. We can assure the citizens that we'll spend that money better than the state would have spent it, or the federal government would have spent it.
I would absolutely say we can do that. They can.
And you mean that in a positive way?
Very positive way. I don't think we can make any more cuts to programs. We're having trouble in higher education now with particularly, they call it STEM, but math and science, and then writing as well, and we just can't afford to cut programs. I'm good with what the School Board requested. I'm not sure I want to go with dime, but I can go to eight, easy enough, in my mind. We already have the $300,000 that Mr. Green was talking about, and so to go back to the citizens to get 300 more, because we don't want to use that, I just wouldn't want to do that. 87% of our people, according to Dr. Parrish just the other day, right out of high school get accepted into colleges, so we're doing a really good job of that, and I don't, I just don't think we need to cut programs at all. So for the one cent, that's, I'm good with that. And I think, I said it last time, I'll say it again, just because I believe it so strongly. This is the best relationship that has existed between the School Board and Council in years, and we really appreciate that from y'all. That's all.
Okay. Closing comments of anybody? You know, it doesn't really, it's hard to call this a work session when we're pretty much all on the same page. And we're going to support the School Board. I think you've heard that from unanimously from Council. So we understand where you're coming from. Kind of goes back to what I said at the very beginning. We understand what you've been through. We think that there is a line that has to be drawn, and we're at that line, and I don't think we're going to go any lower than where we have been. So really, the remaining debate amongst Council is, do we fix it permanently, or do we fix it one time? And I think that'll be a great debate, and I look for that from Council, and I look for us to do the right thing in our minds to fix that. But, so, if nothing else, and I'll close. Yes, sir.
I have one question.
Yes, absolutely. Go right ahead.
Could you give an example, and thank you for clarifying the SOQs a little bit, because I was going to ask that question as well, but some of the unfunded mandates that are coming down, that we haven't had to deal with in the past, that they're just now, all of a sudden, you're starting to push them our way?
A great example is, all of our students are now required to have an economics and personal finance course to graduate. So that came into law a couple of years ago, and so we now have students in our high school who have to have it, but the state provided no funding to support the staff for that course. So what we had to do was reduce the number of sections of other courses that some of our teachers were teaching, so that they could then teach the econ and personal finance course, because we didn't get funding from the state, and in the middle of all this, we've actually been reducing positions as well. So that's one classic example. You know, I could, you know, talk about the CPR requirement, that we now, all students have to be trained in that to graduate, but no funding came, and we have to train our teachers. There's just a multitude of them, but when you're talking about requirements that require us to staff to teach specific things, then, and there's no money, it becomes incredibly challenging. And to add to what Mr. Carter or Dr. Carter said, and a great example of an SOQ is if we went to the minimum level, we could have 30 students in our kindergarten classes. Now imagine 30 kindergartners with a teacher. I mean, that's just not an acceptable way to instruct children. So it goes to show you that they're not fully funding SOQs, which as Dr. Carter said, are so minimal anyways, that it's just, it's really out of kilter. You're welcome.
You know, a list of examples like that help us to tell the story. So anytime that y'all can put down, you know, here's the top 10, but here's the 300. It would be helpful to me as we visit with our state representatives, but putting it in language that people can fully understand is very helpful.
I'll be happy to get a list for you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, School Board, y'all are, y'all can certainly wait around and watch the fun that Council will have in just a few minutes, but I think Randy wants to talk to Council if we can stay on for a little bit and talk about our budget.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Y'all are welcome to sit right where you are. You don't have to get up. It's not, we're not dismissing you.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. I won't redo the budget presentation, which will come later, but as a key, as a piece, it's more than housekeeping, but less than a standalone work session on its own, but as you know, after the budget is formally submitted to you in its recommended format, life happens. The world continues. Revenue estimates change, up or down, based on trends, recent receipts, and we also get additional information with regard to our budget, requests from others, and this is what's affectionately called, the Add/Delete List. On the left-hand side, these are the changes in revenue estimates for next year. Teresa can, and in some instances, Graham can give you more detail, but in summary, public service corporation, we look for that to be higher. Same with bank franchise. Cigarette tax continues to fall. Meals tax, that's a reduction from our estimate, and you see a net increase in personal property. All of that turns together for a projected increase in net revenue over the recommended budget of about $30,000. Well, exactly $30,000. On the expenditure side, this is my suggestion, you may want to consider the first, so that you can understand what that is. That's the new hybrid VRS plan at the state. We got a revised estimate on what that costs, so.
Thank goodness, because I thought you were getting ready to buy a battery-operated vehicle.
I was going to, but $1,200 wouldn't have cut it.
I got him. He's on leave.
The next item, once we did the recommended budget, we gave all the departments an opportunity to come in and talk about specific lines that might be an issue. The only one that we put forward for modification is overtime in fire and rescue. I think the justification is certainly adequate for that. Council members are aware, and we've discussed this in the past, our cooperative efforts with the Peninsula Agency on aging, their van, which they use to transport our citizens to and from their programs, has gone beyond its useful life, and they're buying a new one, and.
But they're like a used school bus.
Probably, if it could facilitate what they're doing, but they've asked us to participate with them in the purchase of a new vehicle, and it is used almost exclusively to serve our citizens, and I think it's appropriate. Last week, the regional jail finalized its cost for next year, and it looks like our share is going to be up $4,500. At the same time, we got a slight reduction from Colonial Community Correction. And then lastly, and this is the most discretionary, that along with the van on this list, so let me tell you what it is, and it's my recommendation. As you all will recall, five years ago, we eliminated the function that Jim Beach at that time was a part of, which was sort of the facilities person, and since that time, between Jim and Ken Somerset, and also with assistance from Public Works, they've just sort of picked it up as another duty as assigned. Well, Jim is the primary person that does sort of miscellaneous maintenance, and he is our go-to guy, along with many other people, but primarily Jim for the issues I'm talking about here. Well, there's only one Jim. And so my recommendation here is we take the balance and provide him a small amount of money within the maintenance budget, so that he can contract, like with the Labor Ready folks, or an organization like that, that the Public Works uses, for folks to do sort of odd jobs for him, so that he's not having to do that while also being a full-time inspector. It'll put him for at least some of the jobs in a supervisory role, rather than having our building official and part-time zoning assistant also doing this. And so I'd ask for your consideration. You don't need to vote on that this evening, but unless otherwise directed, when we bring you the final budget, we're going to incorporate this.
I don't see, you know, Council, would you like him to just include this in the budget?
Yeah, balance, that's it. Yeah.
Okay. So there's your consensus to put that in the budget as it is.
Now, are you going to make that a separate line item under the building, or are you just going to roll it into the Public Works temporary?
It's, we'll make it a separate line item under the maintenance budget. So this will be for Jim and that function, and not part of the Public Works section. That's correct. They don't have to go through each other in that, so. And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I guess we'll close out this work session and see y'all in a few minutes at the, about 10 minutes, at the regular session. All right? Thanks.
You did. Thank you.
You look like you've been in a car. You idiot.